And this is our panel for the first debate of the news hour. Very good evening to everyone on the first day of the new year. Aman Sinha, leader of the BJP and senior advocate in the Supreme Court joins us from Delhi. Professor R. Vaidyanathan joins us from Bangalore. And Sanjay Jha, Congress spokesperson is joining us from Mumbai. Dr. Bijan Mishra, consumer expert, live from Delhi. Dr. Santosh Mehrotra, professor of economics, JNU and former director general of the Research Institute of Planning Commission, also from Delhi. And Mohan Guruswami, chairman and founder of the Centre for Policy Alternatives, joins us from Delhi. Good evening gentlemen. Now, I would like to start with Sanjay Jha. Sanjay, what is the major objection that the Congress party has to this Neeti Ayog? Because the one thing that's been mentioned is lack of federal structure. But from what has been proposed, it seems that this would perhaps be more federal in structure because chief ministers are going to be an integral part of the governing council.
First Tina, very happy new year to all the viewers of Times Now and to all the panelists as well and including yourself and Padmaja. You know, you know, the critical point that we need to recognize here is that the Prime Minister today talks about federalism. But somebody needs to ask him one question Tina. When he made this announcement of wanting to abolish the Planning Commission in his speech on 15th August 1947 to the people of India, had he consulted all the other state chief ministers? Is that federalism or is it nothing but the pathological obsession of this government led by Mr. Modi to try and obliterate their Nehruvian legacy? And the Planning Commission was born out of Pandit Nehru's vision of how to give India a certain direction post-independence in terms of growth, employment and anti-poverty schemes etcetera. So that's a real hard reality that we must keep at the background. Now I'll answer your question.
Because so straight off the bat, you've asked that question. Let the BJP representative answer that. For starters, let Aman Sinha answer that. Yes, Aman Sinha?
No, yeah, yeah, I don't know. But let me finish. This is an old wine in a borrowed bottle. It's not even a new bottle, it's a borrowed bottle. And I'll tell you the...
No, no, now you're just trying to elaborate on that point. You ask a straight question, Aman Sinha answer it.
You're repeating the same thing.
Go ahead. Okay.
Padmaja, greetings on New Year from my side also to Times Now and all your viewers and co-panelists. And let me say that Planning Commission had outlived its utility long back. This was consulted in 1950s. It was not in sync with our contemporary times. It had become an instrument of coercing state governments. And you know, there was no proper implementation, no monitoring, nothing. So therefore, there was a grave need for having an institution which is in tune, in sync with our contemporary times. And therefore, it was changed. And you know, it is the vision of Prime Minister Modi that he foresee that you know, this institution had outlived its utility. And we needed an institution where states had, you know, more powers in policymaking. It, you know, it could foster spirit of cooperative federalism. It could, you know, lead to faster implementation of several developmental projects.
But that's what they're questioning. Aman Sinha, what the Congress is questioning is, is this actually going to foster more federalism? That is what they're questioning. The Congress's accusation is this is going to be completely centre-centred.
Absolutely, because...
Tell me, Aman Sinha, how is this functionally going to be different?
Because earlier, chief ministers used to come with a begging bowl to the Planning Commission. And today, chief ministers and representatives of, you know, UTs, union territories are all members of the governing council.
No, but wasn't the NDC exactly for that purpose? Wasn't the NDC, Aman Sinha, exactly serving that purpose?
This institution is much, much more federal.
So essentially, having to just merge the Planning Commission and the NDC?
In fact, this institution provides powers to state governments and chief ministers.
No, no, we know all of that. We've read the press release, Aman Sinha. But my question is, what was the NDC doing so far?
That strong states will build a strong India. This is what we believe in.
Aman Sinha, what was the NDC doing so far? Wasn't it fulfilling exactly that purpose?
No, it was not. It was not Padmaja, that is the point exactly. When chief ministers have to come with a begging bowl to Planning Commission, when they are not even ex-officio members of the Planning Commission, they have no role whatsoever to play. How do you expect, you know, chief ministers to, you know, raise these issues and, you know, ensure that their concerns are addressed? In fact, most of the chief ministers...
Okay, so we have this political view, of course, a very predictable political view so far. But let's get in the domain experts as well. We have Dr. Santosh Mehrotra, who's been the director general of the Research Institute of Planning Commission as well as the head of its development policy division. Let me get in Dr. Mehrotra as well. Dr. Mehrotra, other than the political viewpoint, as a domain expert, do you think that the Neeti Ayog is going to be any different from how the Planning Commission had been functioning so far? And where do you see the crucial changes, if at all?
Well, we certainly see that it's going to be different because as you rightly said, the NDC was not doing its role. The NDC used to meet once or twice in the year. And it was a body consisting of all the chief ministers. And all that the NDC meeting would manage to achieve in the course of a whole day is fixed speeches. You know, people, the chief minister is actually managing to read their speeches. There was precious little discussion. What we will have now in this format is that a limited number of chief ministers will be part of the governing body. So they'll be part of the discussion on a regular basis. So that's one big difference. The other big difference is that the NDC used to meet once in a year, at most twice in a year. This will be in regular session. So hopefully, this will... Of course, the proof of the pudding will be in the eating. We will have to see how it works out. But clearly, in the way that it is currently, it is intended to be structured. It is intended to be quite different. But the one big thing that would really make it different is that there would be domain expertise within the Planning Commission itself, within the staff of the Planning Commission. You know, cooperative federalism is a very good thing.
Yes, absolutely. That seems to be one of the most important changes. And we will come to that a little bit later. But let's also bring in Professor Vaidyanathan before we come back to you, Sanjay Jha. Professor Vaidyanathan, the accusation or the allegation from the Congress and from other members of the opposition is that this is old wine in a new bottle. Do you agree or not?
I have four points to make. Of that, I will make two now. First is, I am extremely happy that a new institution has come in India which is not named after either Nehru or Indira Gandhi or Rajiv Gandhi.
But is that the sole purpose?
Because in the last 60 years, everything new...
Is that the sole purpose?
In the last 60 years, everything has been named up. Wait, let me finish.
No, no, but you know, that's the point. The allegation is that this is just an attempt to end all Nehruvian institutions. That that is the sole purpose of this exercise.
Wait, madam, madam, if you have come to the country, you will know without sitting in the Delhi television studio, 870 institutions, universities, irrigation channels, roads, airports. Everything has been named only after three people. So there is a change, a dramatic change in terms of having a technical name to the body, one. Two, after the fall of the Berlin Wall, the Mahalanobis model, who was my teacher, I should tell you here, has thoroughly failed. They stayed as an arbiter, stayed as a provider of factories and change in the two-sector model. Originally itself, it was wrong, but we should have abandoned it around 90s. We are too late actually. Third, this is the first time government is thinking on a strategic basis. It doesn't separate commerce, economics, politics, religious wars, clash of civilizations, emerging market situation, global meltdown. Everything is put into a strategic perspective for the think tank to work on it. Earlier, there was no attempt or no such method.
Okay, better late than never. The time really had come for this change to be effected. Bijan Mishra, you seem to be really amused, even you seem to agree with the point that maybe the Nehruvian legacy was to be done away with, the time was right for it.
Most important, the chief ministers of even large states used to go and stand before unelected, unelectable Planning Commission members and solicit funds from them. This was a ridiculous...
Well, that's exactly what Aman Sinha said. Yes, that's the point that Aman Sinha was making, saying that the NDC was, you know, literally standing with a begging bowl. But let's go across to Bijan Mishra now. Yes, Dr. Mishra?
That was the realistic position.
Yeah, thanks. You see, first, let me also wish your viewers a very happy new year and all the panel members. What I want to start with is such reforms needed to be done within the Planning Commission. I think 20 years back. We are late. But what as citizens, what we always look at is that if Planning Commission failed to deliver for what it was constituted on 15th of March 1950, it had eight clear objectives. And when it failed to deliver them, it would have been high time for whatever government was in power 20 years back to bring reforms in the Planning Commission, which is going to happen now. So it is better late than never. So I definitely welcome reform.
Never.
In a term, what I want to tell you all is that the eight clear objectives of the Planning Commission was, number one, remove poverty. Has it been able to remove poverty? Industrialize India. Has it been able to industrialize India? In fact, you know, the industrial growth is going down. We were to become self-reliant. We are now more dependent on China to give us, you know, active pharmaceutical ingredients for making medicines than before. So have, there are several examples in these eight objectives which the government was supposed to do out of the Planning Commission. But what happened? Planning Commission became a big adda of such people who the government wanted to reward or recognize, give them a ministerial status, sit in that building and do nothing. They churn out reports, those reports catch dust. They don't even get...
Okay, so Sanjay Jha, in all of your objections, I think all of them have been shot down. All the domain experts that we've spoken to so far seem to concur on the fact that this was an idea that had failed completely, was in dire need of overhaul. It needed to get some fresh blood in. And more importantly, these are also suggestions which have been backed up by none other than Mr. Chidambaram himself, who had said that this had become a sort of a white elephant. It needed to be made tighter and more effective.
So as your viewer, what we always want to understand is...
Padmaja, let me just start by telling you that the domain experts on your panel, the domain experts on your panel are not the universe of domain experts. There are multiple of views which are very different from the people you have represented.
No, but the view here seems to be very unanimous, Sanjay Jha. Any view which is not immediate, does not agree with you is of course to be disminuted. Also, no, and Sanjay, please, Sanjay Jha, just...
We are sat inside the Planning Commission.
The question that Padmaja... Sanjay Jha, no, it's not just Chidambaram. Chidambaram talked about the need to tighten the Planning Commission. The deputy chairman of the Planning Commission also, Montek Singh Aluwalia himself also said that there needs to be a major reform of the Planning Commission. An overhaul, not a dismantling, but a complete overhaul.
Tina, in fact, former Prime Minister Manmohan Singh, who had served Planning Commission for long, he had stated that Planning Commission has become irrelevant.
Can I speak without interruption or whatever?
And there needed to be, you know, huge change.
Yeah, exactly. So Aman Sinha, we'll take Sanjay Jha's response to that because the fact is that it was almost universally accepted that the Planning Commission was not working, that it was redundant, that it needed reform, it needed reorganization. So what is the objection then if that is being done?
Absolutely.
Okay, Tina, Tina, I would really appreciate if you have given a lot of time to the others.
Yeah, please, we allow Sanjay Jha to respond to that, please gentlemen.
But can I, can I? It's incredible.
Yes, Sanjay.
But anyway, anyway, let me put the point through. You are absolutely right and I'm fully aware of it myself that there are not just the former Prime Minister, the former Finance Minister. Everybody agreed that the Planning Commission's role, obviously over six decades, it transforms. It needs to go through its own reorientation. The point we are discussing is not reorientation.
When you were in government, why didn't you do it? What was stopping you?
Can I, can I speak without...
Yes, go ahead.
Just a brief interruption. It's my kind, humble request on the New Year's Day. I'm saying that firstly, let's understand. Somebody made a point on your panel today, that I think it was Aman Sinha, that the Planning Commission was not in sync with the times. Now, there may be some procedural issues in terms of the relationship between the centre and the state and the allocation of funds or the way the plans were being approved, which could be looked at afresh. Nobody is denying that. But the fundamental issue here is that the Planning Commission's job is to look at an inclusive development and a sustainable growth model. You have a professor here on your panel who talks about the fact that it was not in sync, it was obsolete. Well, let me tell you, the public-private partnership project was a creation of this Planning Commission itself. Whether you look at the increased role of the private sector, the role of infrastructure, they are all basic criteria that emerged out of the Planning Commission led by Dr. Montek Singh Aluwalia. I want to make one more point to the professor from Bangalore. The professor from Bangalore, I think I need to tell him something. I think Mr. Vaidyanathan, I'm not sure what his name is.
May I respond now?
That end of day, sir, market economy, you know, just because it emerged during the socialist Raj doesn't mean that today you go for a total market economy model because India today also needs a combination which any mixed economy needs between welfare allocation and between an economic growth model. You can't dump poverty as just another substantive...
This particular Neeti Ayog is going to exclude that. One second, we will ask Professor Vaidyanathan to respond to that because that question was directed at him. And then we get Mohan Guruswami into the debate, yes professor? Yeah, Aman, we'll also come to you in a minute, Professor Vaidyanathan.
I think, I think, I think the gentleman, what is his name? Sanjay something, right?
Mr. Sanjay Jha, yes.
He doesn't listen nor he, he doesn't listen nor he understands. That's his problem. He is neither a domain nor an expert.
I never ever told that the market economy is the...
No, please, do not interrupt. Do not interrupt. You just shut up. Do not interrupt. He, I never ever mentioned that the market economy is the...
Yeah, no, I will request everyone to just be civil of the debate, please. But yeah, let's not get personal and let's keep the debate to where it should be. Professor Vaidyanathan, your response to Sanjay Jha, please let's keep it civil.
Yes, I will keep it civil because he made an accusation. I never ever told that the market economy is the solution or anything. You just go back to the recording. I only mentioned that it has outlived its utility as a mechanism started in the 1950s. And there is a need to re-look at it. And the newly formed institution hopefully will have a geo-strategy.
Okay, so there was a need to completely overhaul it. And that is something that the Congress also accepts. Let's get Mohan Guruswami in. Mr. Guruswami, you know, the question is one of federal structure because that's one of the main objections that's come through from the Congress. Now, as we see the proposed structure, it actually limits the number of union ministers that are going to be part of this Neeti Ayog. Where earlier, we had up to 10, 12 ministers holding important portfolios, being part of the Planning Commission. Now there is a cap of a maximum of four members of the Union Council of Ministers that can be ex-officio part of this proposed Neeti Ayog. What's your take on that?
I think, I think for a start, change is always good. This Planning Commission, when it started in the 50s, central, it was planning, a central planning and the command economy. It was planning for production for use. That means if you needed cars, then you made one kind of car or two kinds of cars. And you didn't need many hundreds of models for people to choose from. So this was called, the concept of production for use. In 1990, that changed. When Rivelli came, he was in Arshmaral reforms. He scrapped industrial licensing policy. 50% of the utility of the Planning Commission went with that. And then the nature of the and shape of the Planning Commission also subtly underwent a change with government. But still, what happened was under the last Prime Minister, because of the perceived closeness of the chairman, deputy chairman of the Planning Commission and the Prime Minister, the Planning Commission assumed tremendous pause. It began looking into governments, state governments, looking into affairs of department and such. Overreaching itself to that extent. And I think Prime Minister Modi is reacting to that role of the Planning Commission. And to that extent, he is right. The Planning Commission has no business to be poking its nose into every small decision of state governments, which the previous Planning Commission was doing. So what he has done is, he's transformed this into a policy planning centre and a policy analysis and a think tank, which is good, which is the role the Planning Commission should have. Because we, in our, you know, the world has changed. The world has now become a market economy. We can't sit there and...
The world has changed, then why are you so afraid of change, Sanjay Jha? Is this opposition simply for the sake of opposition? Because the last vestiges of that legacy that was carrying on is now being done away with. And that is what makes the Congress so jittery now. Aman Sinha, we'll get back to you in a minute. Let's just get Sanjay's response to that.
The Congress party opposed to it because the BJP is doing it.
Because the truth is...
If the Congress did it, the BJP would oppose it.
Because the truth, well, I don't know who's interrupting. I don't know who's interrupting.
Yeah, Sanjay, go ahead.
I just want to make one point, that there is a very, very, very defined perceptible effort on the part of this government to try and obliterate and wipe out any institution that was created by Pandit Jawala Nehru. I'm going to repeat it on your panel because you got many people there on your panel who have a very clear, defined view that seem to be supporting Mr. Modi's thesis. But the truth is, not one of them has been able to tell you right now. As to how is it going to be functionally... One minute. How is it that, how is it going to be functionally different from what the Planning Commission has? I want to make a point here. I want to make a point here.
No, no, that's exactly what Aman Sinha is going to elaborate for us. That is exactly what Aman Sinha is going to elaborate for us, Sanjay Jha. How is it going to be functionally different? And that those are the areas we're looking into in this debate. No, and also, Sanjay Jha, you say, carry on with an institution which was set up five best six decades ago. If the institution is not working, as all of the experts are saying, why persist with it? Isn't that the entire point of changing and evolution? Aman Sinha wants to come in. Aman Sinha?
One minute, one minute. Padmaja, can I tell you something?
Yes, yes, Tina. No, no, enough, please. Now I will have to respond.
No, but Padmaja, I would tell you something.
Okay, no, Sanjay, let's also...
I completely fail to understand when Planning Commission was consulted. Planning Commission was consulted with certain objectives. And the objectives were that it will eliminate poverty. Did the poverty get eliminated? The objective was that industrial production, manufacturing will be enhanced.
You know, that point's already been made by Dr. Bijan Mishra. Tell us how, tell us how it is going to be functionally different.
If it miserably failed to address and achieve its objectives, why should that institution not be changed? That model has failed to deliver.
Okay, so how's this going to be different?
Just because it was created by Nehru, everything should be there for all times to come. I cannot understand this logic. And just for sake of your symbolism, you will allow people of this country to suffer. Is this the argument that Mr. Sanjay Jha is giving? And please allow me to say, his own Prime Minister, Prime Minister Manmohan Singh...
If you've got a headache, cut the head off.
He was part of the Planning Commission.
If you've got a headache, cut the head off.
And time and again, he...
No, actually, actually, the idea seems to be if you have a headache, just take a dispense. Don't just persist with the headache because, well, the headache was given to you by someone who you hold in very high esteem.
No, please, please allow me to just, just 10 more seconds. No, just 10 more seconds and the Neeti Ayog is not merely going to be a think tank. It is going to be a knowledge and an innovation support.
In addition to that, also answer the question, how is this not repackaged? How is it going to be functionally different?
Host of other bodies. Sorry?
Yeah, just, you know, elaborate on how this is going to be functionally different because that seems to be the objection that the Congress has.
In a different manner, you have all the chief ministers who are part of it. All the chief ministers are part of it. All the left-wing governors of UTs are part of it. They are going to have a larger role in policymaking. There is going to be a uniformity of policy throughout the country. And on developmental agenda, if there are any, you know, small issues or impediments which come up, Planning Commission, which is going to be a high-powered body.
And Sanjay Jha adding to that, and I also want to bring in Bijan Mishra now.
Which is going to be a high-powered body.
You spoke about the National Development Council. The point that everyone has been making that the NDC also wasn't really doing much. And the fact is that so far, you had this one-size-fits-all formula, which clearly wasn't working, Bijan Mishra. And that is why the whole idea that you make it, make it open. Let more voices come in, let more expertise come in. What's the problem there, Bijan Mishra?
Absolutely, Padmaja. You, Padmaja, Padmaja, what I want to tell you is, first tell Sanjay not to come to quick conclusions about us, about our personal opinions. We are very neutral, we are apolitical people. When we sit on your channel, we say the truth. So let him not put aspirations on us. And it is very serious aspiration which he has made. We are not being driven by any government. We are being driven by the priorities of the citizens. And that's important for us. So what I want to clear to all your viewers today is that Planning Commission failed. Citizens needed reforms, which we have been shouting since 1990, when the market started changing. What we want to tell everybody today in your panel and also to your viewers is that we are looking forward to what is this new going to happen in the coming years. They have taken 60 months from us, the present government, to deliver. They have a manifesto before they went to the elections. We are looking at the manifesto very critically. And we want to make sure that in 60 months, they deliver that. So seven months have passed, 53 months are left. We want to see if they want to bring in reforms, they want to do certain things differently. We must give them an opportunity to do that. And the citizens are prepared to do that.
Yes, Sanjay Jha, the fact is that, you know, the Neeti Ayog has just been announced, Sanjay Jha. The thing is, are you jumping to conclusions? Shall we see how this body works?
Absolutely.
No, but Tina, they should also clarify whether Congress party is opposing restructuring of Planning Commission and replacing of Planning Commission by Neeti Ayog. Do they oppose it?
So we'll just allow Sanjay to respond to that and Aman Sinha will be back with you.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, you know, the point I'm making is, you know, if you look at, please don't look at this Planning Commission in isolation for heaven's sake. You have this government which has passed an ordinance to bring about fundamental changes on the land acquisition norms. Let me tell you, this government is wedded to market economy. That may be their ideology. And they are free to exercise that. And the point I'm making here is, the point I'm making here is, I want to give you an example of a research report that I challenge anybody on your panel to contradict me on. There is a research report that establishes here that actually, even in the most advanced western economies of the world, as the economy grows, the role of the state actually ends up increasing correspondingly higher. The government expenditure, the proportion of the economy is as high as 35 to 45%. So if anybody believes that just because you are market-friendly, you're going to make minimum government, which is what Mr. Modi has been saying, and he wants to dilute land acquisition, he wants to make sure that everything is market-friendly, it doesn't really work that way. Since you have some experts on your panel, I can talk to them what experts...
Professor Vaidyanathan, do you want to answer that challenge, Professor Vaidyanathan?
This is a reality that we need to acknowledge. The government has a role.
What point I want to make?
And I think the job of alleviating...
Gentlemen, let's just, let's just listen to Professor Vaidyanathan because if it's a point-by-point rebuttal that he wants to give to that specific challenge that has been given by Sanjay Jha. Yes, Professor Vaidyanathan?
This body is, Padmaja, this body is totally different than Planning Commission is, I want to stress. It is not only focusing on economy and economy-related matters. If you go through the complete agenda which you have got with me, it is one of those holistic panel which focuses on geostrategic issues, security issues, commerce, foreign affairs. It is trying to integrate all of these and then try to evolve a policy for the future. And where the chief ministers also will play a role. This is something I think which is not comprehended by many people. It is not just, you know, studying some economic models and trying to allocate resources. That's one of the issues. But more important is this geostrategic attitude towards evolving global situation and how India's response to these global situation should be in conjunction with the state chief ministers. I think this is something extraordinary and dramatic. If it works, it's going to change the contours of the country.
Well, you know, let's get Dr. Mehrotra in on that also because one of the points that was made earlier, which I'd like to come back to now, is this secretariat. Where you're not just going to be appointing, you know, intellectuals, but you're going to be appointing industry experts into this secretariat, bringing their domain expertise. And that seems to be something which works, like Professor Vaidyanathan was saying, which works towards a progressive model.
That is right, but let's see if that is exactly what happens. It should not be just industry experts. It should be people who are health experts because we are not doing very well on our health or nutrition or sanitation outcomes. We also need education experts, we need skills experts.
Consumer protection, consumer awareness.
Industry experts, no question about it. Well, you know, a very important thing is that in each of these areas...
Consumer protection.
Well, that can be captured under, under other heads. You know, you can't have just one member looking after consumer protection with all due respect. If I may finish, sir. But sir, if I may finish, I did not interrupt you. Sorry, I did not interrupt you, sir. Padmaja, can you please ask this gentleman to calm down?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
So that I may finish my argument. Thank you, thank you ma'am. It's absolutely critical that not just, not just people who are the members, who are the sort of minister of state-ranked people who are domain experts. They were always domain experts. You need domain experts below them, right through, down to the lower level. Without that, you cannot bring in good expertise from outside. Because one of the roles that the new government has been talking about for this Niti, Niti Ayog is that it will be a knowledge hub. Well, to create a knowledge hub within the Niti Ayog, you need people who are knowledgeable themselves right down to within the sector, within a division, who can then bring in expertise from outside. This is a very important role in addition to the role that Dr. Vedhanathan was talking about. There's another important role which I would like to hear Mr. Aman Sinha actually talk about is whether it will have a strategic coordination function. For instance, in China, the National Development Reforms Commission, after China became a market economy, this was the new name of the erstwhile Planning Commission, it was a more, it became a more powerful body than the erstwhile Planning Commission. Are we planning to make this body a more powerful body in the following sense? Will it be able to carry out strategic coordination, for instance, within the transport sector, within the health sector, within the energy sector? That's the role the Chinese Planning Commission, the NDRC plays, that's the role.
Aman Sinha, would you like to respond to that?
Because line ministries, line ministries are not able to coordinate and this country is a very large and complex country. Yes, cooperative federalism is going to be very important in this, in this coordination function. But you know, sectoral coordination must be carried out by someone. Committees of secretaries of line ministries at the central government level haven't worked. That procedure and that mechanism hasn't worked. So Mr. Aman Sinha, would you like to hear from you sir?
Is the Niti Ayog going to be structured in that way, Aman Sinha? Yeah, and just to add to that, Aman Sinha, before you respond, you know, the, the, the key question is what role is Niti Ayog going to have in resource allocation? Because that's what it comes down to, that's the crux of the issue.
That's a very good question, very good question.
Yeah.
Yes, you know, let me assure you that on all these three counts, Niti Ayog, the way it is envisaged, it addresses all these three issues. Firstly, they are going to be, you know, they are going to be domain experts, they are going to be specialists. They would not be whole time members, but they will be special invitees. And for each and every, you know, specified area, we will have a special, you know, invitees panel who are experts in that field. So that, that issue has been taken care of. Secondly, as my friend was rightly pointing out, there are several, you know, issues in any, you know, developmental journey which crop up, several impediments which crop up. And you know, it is, it is one of the objects of the Niti Ayog that it will ensure that all these impediments are removed from, you know, having better coordination, not only between center and state, but also, you know, inter, interdepartmental, interministerial coordination. It will be duty and responsibility of Niti Ayog to ensure that all these impediments are removed in a time bound manner. And obviously, as far as resource allocation is concerned, after, you know, consulting all the stakeholders, all the states, all the chief ministers and all the expert bodies and all the domain experts, you know, Niti Ayog will come to a conclusion and you know thereafter, you know, it will be, it will be approved in, in that very manner only.
Okay, so you know, it's, it's clear that they, they will need to wait and watch and see how this works. And I think that the opinion is also unanimous here that the Planning Commission was not working. So we come back to Sanjay Ja, you know, you were, you were talking about the fact that it wasn't a consultative process. One second, Sanjay Ja, you talked about the fact that it was announced in August, you know, by the Prime Minister without consulting anyone. But the fact is that there was consultation. In fact, the Prime Minister opened a platform, an, on, online platform, inviting suggestions and also held a meeting of chief ministers in December to try and get that consultation coming in. Why do you then say it was not a consultative process?
You, you, you know something Tina, I think we have acknowledged already on your channel that, you know, our UPA government and the Planning Commission former members were very transparent in their articulation that the Planning Commission did need to go through a restructuring or in terms of a certain operational changes in terms of the way the relationship with the states are. But what you found absolutely astounding was that the Prime Minister, can I speak? I'm speaking, I'm speaking to the anchor, I'm speaking to the anchor, don't you? You know, the question is, according to this Prime Minister, this Prime Minister and this government has been absolutely past masters of rebranding and repackaging.
No, but Sanjay Ja, straight question from Aman Sinha coming there, please answer that. Answer that, you know, the fact is you're agreeing that the Planning Commission was not working. So then where is the problem in replacing it? So straight question coming from Aman Sinha, where is the problem in replacing it? When you're accepting that every single person even among your leadership agreed that it was not working?
Well, let me tell you, I give you, I give you a very appropriate analogy. I said if you got a headache, do you take a pill or do you cut the head off? That is Mr. Modi's panacea unfortunately.
No, but, but they are rehauling it, it would be cutting the head off, just taking your analogy a little further, stretching a little further. To restructure it would be taking a pill.
I'm sorry to say, Mr. Ja. Nobody agrees with your analogy, not even your own chief ministers.
The Jawahar Nar, Jawahar Nar Nehru Urban Renewal Mission.
You have already given a wrong example and a wrong analogy. Now you are adding up your rules by giving another wrong example.
This is all happening all the time. This government has used a Jandhan Yochna, everything is nothing but a repackaging, remarketing, a complete photo shoot thing that Mr. Modi is doing. But you don't mess around with the Planning Commission.
Which you think was needed, which you agree was needed. If they are repackaging and fixing the problems which your leaders acknowledge, why the opposition?
So you are opposing just for heck of opposing? No, Mr. Sanjay Ja arguments exposes that he is opposing just for heck of opposing.
Mr. Sinha, can you tell me what is the poverty level in India today compared to what it was in 1947? Do you know the answer? It was 90 percent, then is 22 percent now.
That is what your Planning Commission has been doing absolutely wrong.
India's GDP growth rate, GDP growth rate over the last 10 years at the US was over 7 and a half, 8 percent.
Is this not a shame? Is this not an illustration of the fact that Planning Commission needed to go?
The Planning Commission may have certain lack in it.
And still Mr. Ja is, you know, holding up, he's giving all the glorious arguments in favor of Planning Commission.
But you have decided to drop it because you are against Mr. Modi and the party of Janta Party is against everything that Pundit Nehru stood for.
No, but you're coming across as a little confused. You know, your, your arguments are a little confusing. Earlier you said there are lacunae, then you're saying why are they doing away with those problems? If they're restructuring something, then why are you opposing it? When you yourself acknowledge, Sanjay Ja, that there were problems. As your other leaders have also admitted, what's the problem in a re-haul?
No, 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 no. I, I'm telling you, you know, it's, it's very simple. If, if I have to replace a battery, do I sell my entire mobile phone? Can you give me an answer to that? I replace the battery, I try and improvise whatever the problem may be. So the question, the fundamental question is, if, if for example, could India have grown in the UPA time?
No, no, but Sanjay Ja, Sanjay Ja, just going by that analogy. Sanjay, it wasn't the battery that was not working, you just accepted yourself, it was the mobile phone itself that was not working. Dr. Bijan Mishra, now Sanjay Ja says that the Planning Commission did work in terms of poverty alleviation. He's giving us figures saying, yes, it worked.
No, no, no.
What would you say to that?
It did, he's giving, he's, he's, he's misleading, he's misleading, hello. But the GDP growth rate was 8 percent over 10 years under the UPA government. Poverty came down to 140 million people went above the poverty line. You think the Planning Commission was dysfunctional? I mean, that's a ridiculous argument.
You, you, Sanjay doesn't know, in, Sanjay doesn't know, Sanjay doesn't know. In the year 2000, in the year 2000, please let me speak. In the year 2000, India became a signatory to the Millennium Development Goal where they agreed that in 15 years, they will halve the poverty level from 2010 to 2015. Have they been able to, from 2000 to 2015, have they been able to do that? They have not been able to do that. They have not been able to bring down the poverty level even by 10 percent. What is, you're talking about half? So my contention is.
You see, Sanjay should admit that the government had spent.
The government has failed, the government has failed. You think it was 30 percent, it was 30 percent in 2000, it has come down to 27 percent. You have not been able to halve it in, in 15 years. So what are you talking about? So let me tell you, they don't allow the parliament to function, they don't allow processes to come forward. You see, let me, let, let, you don't disturb me.
From 37 percent, the poverty went down.
Please, when I'm speaking, you're not supposed to be talking. When I'm speaking, you're not supposed to be talking.
No, no, can you dispute that?
You're not supposed to be talking. Please listen to me, you please keep quiet for two minutes. What I want to tell your viewers is that there was a great need for reforms. The reforms had to come, the writing was on the wall. What we all wanted to understand now is that to make sure that the government becomes citizen driven, becomes patient driven as somebody said in the panel, healthcare needs complete overhauling in our country. We have to make sure that every patient is able to access quality healthcare.
And in fact, before, before you respond to that, Sanjay Ja, Professor Merutra also wants to add to that question. Professor Merutra.
Sure, 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 sure. You know, it's, it's, it's very important that health, nutrition and sanitation, these receive the kind of priority that in a sense was not being given in the past. After all, health expenditure barely rose under the UPA. It's still at barely 1.1 percent of GDP. You know, we are, we are at the lowest. Now, therefore, it's absolutely critical that this, this morning's papers gave great news that there is a new national policy for, of 2015 in the health sector. We hope that one of the objectives of this national health policy, I've been reading the health policy today. It looks impressive, but it's absolutely critical that public expenditure on health goes up and goes up in a strategic manner, in a coordinated manner so that the swachh baharat and the nutritional interventions are integrated. If they are not integrated, health interventions alone will not have the impact that we are looking for. And we are one of the sort of worst in the world as far as nutrition is concerned. We are one of the worst in the world as far as sanitation is concerned.
So, so as, as Bijan Mishra and Professor Merutra were saying, Sanjay Ja, right now it seems a more holistic view is being taken as far as the development goals are concerned, as far as the Niti Ayog is concerned as the basic plan of the Niti Ayog as is visible, as, visible to us right now. Is the Congress getting a little nervous that this plan may just get the Modi government a lot of plaudits across the board and which is why this is something that you simply cannot take lying down?
Well, well, I will repeat what, what I think Manish Tiwari said earlier during the day. This government is doing nothing but a lot of cosmetic and synthetic tokenism. Let me tell you the truth and I don't, and I challenge anybody to actually refute these figures. The, it is an issue that yes, the Planning Commission has to adapt with the times. Nobody is denied it, I'm being upfront with you on your channel. So your viewers will know that we are being very transparent about it. All we are talking about is, would India have grown at around 7 and a half? One minute, would India have grown at close to 8 percent GDP in 10 years under UPA if the Planning Commission was dysfunctional? Would 150 million people come below the poverty line, above the poverty line?
But you're saying two different things at the same time, Sanjay Ja, you're saying that there was an overhaul.
No, one minute.
And then you're trying to say that the Planning Commission did its job. If you think the Planning, Aman Sinha, respond to that. If the Planning Commission was doing its job, why does the Congress agree that it needed an overhaul in the first place?
Well, well, just to improve certain operational efficiencies, some states.
Which is what they're doing.
The Commission needed greater degree of independence, but what, let me tell you, all your words.
Sanjay, let Aman Sinha respond, Aman Sinha.
Really? And it had outlived its utility long back. Now if we are envisaging a vibrant, modern think tank for the country which will, you know, have inputs and expertise of all the domain experts, which we, which is going to enhance the spirit of cooperative federalism, which is going to, you know, speeden and hasten up the, you know, developmental projects and its implementation. What is the difficulty that my friends of Congress?
It smells a little of sour grapes, Sanjay Ja, to be honest.
We just do not understand it.
It seems a little bit like sour grapes, Professor Vedhanathan, would you agree? Is it a case of sour grapes?
Yeah, no, I only, I want to point out.
They are merely giving self contradictory arguments and they are arguing both ways.
Every time BJP talks of federalism, every time BJP talks of federalism, I have to choke and I'm literally choking because this is the same party which affords even a national counter federalism center on the issue of federalism. So let's not even talk about it. And by the way, Mr. Sinha, you haven't answered my question. Where are you going to be different?
Sanjay Ja, just a second, just a second.
That Congress chief ministers were standing with very.
Just a second, catch, catch your breath while Professor Vedhanathan also wants to make a point. Yes, Professor Vedhanathan.
Padmaja, this is the first time, this is the first time your body is going to look at the evolving global situation. I think these facts are not being adequately focused. If you look at the entire domain picture which you have got with me, this is going to look at the evolving global situation and it's a very, very complex situation in the world today.
But is this opposition, opposition to the whole idea of Niti Ayog seem like a case of sour grapes to you, Professor Vedhanathan?
No, you know, after all, you know, I would not blame anybody in the opposition because their role is just to oppose. That's what they're in for there, you know, they would like to share and say whatever is being done.
But is the opposition to the Niti Ayog just for the sake of opposition or do they have an argument?
No, my, my only point is they should have certain grace in accepting certain deficiencies which are getting rectified and wait for it. After all, somebody correctly pointed out, proof of the pudding is in the eating. Wait for a couple of months, wait perhaps for an year or so and then say that this is what it has been constituted and it has not delivered. Instead of on day one itself, if you say that, you know, this whole thing is.
Yeah, exactly, day one, day one, that's, the opposition is coming on day one, Aman Sinha. Is the Congress opposing this Niti Ayog only for the sake of opposition?
It's not just the Congress party, all opposition parties are criticizing, it's not just the Congress party. I think you need to clarify that, Padmaja. All, all parties, all parties other than the BJP have contested this.
Was that it was created by Mr. Nehru. Now can that be a, you know, cogent argument really? If, you know, if every institution has to evolve with times, if it had failed to address its objective.
We all know the pathological obsession and distrust that you have.
In fact, it had outlived its utility long back and the Congress party was only interested in giving jobs to its cronies and therefore it, you know, just languished for some more time.
Absolutely deeply distrustful of anything that put Nehru there.
Please, no, Mr. Sanjay Ja has not even clarified whether he is opposing the restructuring of Planning Commission and replacing it by Niti Ayog.
But Sanjay, is that your main exception to it? Is that your main exception to this, Sanjay Ja? The fact that it is breaking down a Nehruian institution is, is, because that's the point you keep, keep coming back to. And is it just, is it a just argument?
Absolutely. Well, let me tell you something, the economic rationale was something that could have been sorted out within the existing structure and ambit of the planning commission. The fact that you had the Prime Minister make a unilateral statement on the 15th of August 1947 from the ramparts of the Red Force without consulting the state governments tells you that this was a political statement as well. And if you had to look at the economic issues of how.
But the chief ministers were consulted, they were called for a meeting.
That could have been done within.
No, Mr. Sanjay Ja in one breath says that Congress party was also supporting the, the replacing of Planning Commission and you know.
And Bijan Mishra, the question also is, if Sanjay Ja, like he's admitting and a lot of his other Congress party leaders have, if there were flaws, what was stopping them from fixing those flaws all this while? What were they waiting for?
Absolutely.
I, I don't understand, he's talking about federalism. He doesn't, he doesn't know, Sanjay doesn't know, Sanjay doesn't know, Sanjay.
There is also a financial commission, there is also a National Development Council and by the way, discussions don't happen only in an NDC meeting.
People resign, people resigned from NDC.
They meet Eurocrats at different times.
How many times did the NDC meet?
The civil society representatives resigned, resigned from NDC. The, the, the civil society representatives resigned from NDC. Yeah, but Sanjay doesn't know about that, it seems. You see, what we need to understand is, from the time the new government has come in, from, please, let me finish. From the time the new government has come in, let me tell you my personal perception. It has been in a consultative process. They have constituted several interministerial groups which are now looking at issues like, for example, I, I, my domain is on consumer protection and consumer awareness. For the first time, for the first time, this government has constituted an interministerial group to look at consumer protection or consumer welfare or citizen centric, centric policies within various ministries, cutting across various ministries. First time it has happened and I must congratulate this government for doing that. What, what we all want to see is that all this what is being done, will it keep up to its promise? Will it be able to deliver? Because we are interested in such institutions which can deliver, which can make the poor come out of poverty. We want to see such institutions who can generate employment. We want to see such institutions which will bring balance, regional balances within the states. Today, there is so much of, you know, difference between one state and the other state in terms of development. And you want to tell me that the, the chief ministers don't want it? All the chief ministers want it, they have all agreed by it.
Okay, Sanjay, before we give you the last word, there, there have been a lot of charges, a lot of points that have been made by our panelists. Before we give you the last word, I also want to get, go across to Mr. Mohan Guruswami. So what do you think will be the major challenges? Because already they are facing stiff opposition from all the non BJP parties. What do you think that the Niti Ayog really needs to do to prove that this was an idea? It was, it was, it was, it was something worth doing, the entire re-haul was worth it?
You know, I think all the chief ministers will be very happy to get rid of this monkey off their back because the Planning Commission has become too overwhelming and it needed to go in its present form. But doesn't mean that there's no role for planning. There will be planning in the country, planning is getting, going to get more decentralized. It's going to go to the ministries, it's going to shift to the states. But one concern I have, and there must be some mechanism to, to address this, is that the poorer states, states like Bihar which have very low development expenditure, per capita development expenditure, states which have high per capita expenditure, there has to be some basis of allocating funds to these states. If the finance commission is going to do this to give them additional funds so that they can spend more money on development, it'll be a good thing. But it is not correct for the Planning Commission to do the allocation of resources. Planning Commission should be now more concerned with flagging off concerns and telling the government that this is an area of concern, this is where befalling Yan. And so this is a good change, I think we should give it time. But to say that, you know, planning commission causes all our problems is also not right.
The fact is, is it too early to complain? And why would you disagree if we say and as many of our panelists have said that the proof of the pudding is in the eating? Why not just wait and see if this Niti Ayog works and then come up with some opposition to it if you have valid reasons to?
Correct, very correct. Well, well firstly, let me clear a big misconception, let me clear a big misconception that the Planning. that the Planning Commission was the one which was making the allocation of funds very independently. In fact, the ministries, the relevant ministries have been taking the final call on that. Number two, one of the key challenges has been a lot of the centrally-sponsored teams that needed, that needed.
Problem was with the design of the programs, the design of the programs was very centralized.
No, no, no. I thought you were going to give me some uninterrupted time.
Padmaja, you need better planning of time on this panel.
Anyway, the point I'm making is centrally-sponsored schemes, centrally-sponsored schemes do require a greater degree of monitoring and somebody set a think tank, well, you know, let me tell you, the planning commission, existing planning commission that we had, had some excellent experts from different fields of academics or economists and consultants. You had a lot of experts from civil society.
Only the members, not below that, I'm sorry.
And the last point, and the last point, and the last point here.
Only the favorites of the government.
The last point is, one minute, and the last point is, the Planning Commission was never a regulatory authority by itself at all. It was an advisory capacity, it had a role to play as a research body for all the states put together.
Which the states always resented, which the states always resented. Sanjay, you've accepted on this show even tonight that the Planning Commission was not working and therefore we come back to the one question which is, if this government has done which your previous government needed, said was needed, then why are you complaining? On that note gentlemen, we are going to thank you all for joining us on the first debate tonight. We are sorry, we are completely out of time on the first debate. Thank you very much.